Good morning, it's December 9th and welcome to the Clicktack County Commissioners' Regular Meeting for this week. We have Commissioner Anderson and myself in session. And I guess I was, I have to correct myself, it was a special meeting. Since we moved to Monday, it's considered a special meeting, not a regular meeting. But it will serve as our meeting for this week. Commissioner Anderson and I are here and we'll start with the Pudge of Regents.
By the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, nation under God, in the visible number two and justice world.
Madam Chair, would make a motion to approve the business agendas presented?
And I'll step down in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. So we'll start with public comment. So if you're in person in the room, please raise your hand so that we can call forward to the microphone and let us know who you are and where you're from, if you can. Otherwise, online, please raise your hand or unmute yourself so we can call on you. And it is limited to three minutes or less. So thank you, in the room, anybody wish to give public comment? I don't see any, so online. Good morning, Mr. Isaacson.
Right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Hi, it's Ricky Isaacson in Loud Washington. Now, per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot thirty and forty-two dot thirty dot eighty, and its subsections, you must move today's business to the next regularly scheduled meeting, twelve seventeen twenty-four, and adjourn this meeting immediately. Any discussion of not having public comment and electronic access to meetings also violates the above-mentioned RCWs. I'm still waiting for an answer about that missing airport paperwork and I am sending an email directly to the FAA Fraud Department and see if I can get them to answer. I'll be attaching the video of the meeting eleven twenty-six twenty-four, where you said nothing is wrong and your meetings go well and see what they have to say. A contract is a contract is a contract. You are legally obligated to comply with every article of a valid contract and do the business of the people. I want to thank Sheriff Songer and Under Sheriff Nopes for their participation last week. The taxpayers and voters of Clicktack County would like to hear why Sheriff Songer was doing an investigation at the request of Ms. Zoller in the first place. Now, I have a couple of questions. Number one, how many investigations were requested by Ms. Zoller and which agencies were involved? Two, public safety, you have the jail under new DOC control. As the population has grown in the county, the Sheriff's Department and staffing levels for deputies on the road has not kept pace with that growth and consumer price indexing increases. Past and present commissioners have not allotted sufficient funding for new deputies protect public. Will you be the board that changes that and looks out for the safety and welfare of all citizens and stop cutting funding to the sheriff? And lastly, number three, as for the budget, there's the KVH and their bill. It has been established that it's not all the sheriff's bill. When are you going to stop blaming the sheriff and get to KVH to figure it out or write it off? All right, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. In the room? So online? I'm not seeing anybody else giving comment this morning. Mr. Smith, we haven't seen you for a while. You're hiding back there.
Well, he interrupted my.
I see. Well, he had the sunshine, so. You're welcome to come forward, it doesn't look like we have anybody else that wishes to comment this morning. We haven't seen you for a while, would you like to comment?
I will come forward, and yes, I was down there in Las Vegas watching the Formula One races and then I stayed there.
Probably smart.
Yes, it was a little warmer.
Yeah.
Andrew Smith, Clicktack County. Twenty-four hours or less back in the county and I had caught a few people gave me a kind of earful. I have had people complain about wolves on their property, coyotes and cougars on their property now. I've had people complain from downstairs down there at the Veterans Office that they want to try to get some help and no help came around. In fact, they gotta drive clear to Portland now to go get the help. And I was a little shocked about that because I'm a veteran and I've never used the office yet, but I was in total shock to hear that they didn't even get an email back from this guy that's downstairs. I was in total shock. So I was wondering kind of what is he exactly doing? And I understood that one of them told me that we don't hand out money unless it's really necessary. Well, as a veteran, I know that we do hand out money, but you've got to be qualified, which I don't even see that it won't even through a process. So I was in shock. And hopefully we get a good comment here on the jail, since he's here. I'm kind of looking forward to see how his first couple of days turnout is. And other than that, I don't have anything else.
You've been gone a while, so.
Oh, I've enjoyed it, I'm just like, can't take off and, uh, do I have to come back? Or need to come back? No, but I was online, oh, speaking of online, I did have problems, I couldn't talk. And I won't say I had to start the signal, but even down there in Las Vegas, I was still having problems, it wouldn't let me talk, so.
Did you hit star six?
Uh, no, it didn't.
Operator, air.
Yeah. No, I just hit the. Okay, oh, no, that's fine.
Good to know.
Yeah, I kind of forgot about that and I just gave up, I just listened.
I'm glad it was that simple.
Yeah, well, we'll try that again next time, well, we missed you. Well, I bet you have.
Thank you. Good morning, Jean.
Hey, good morning, everybody, just wanted to say thanks for having the meeting. I wanted to thank Commissioner Zoller for your comments, for the information about Loud Snowden Road. I didn't see that, so I really appreciate the information. Also wanted to say thanks to Scott for his comments last week about participation and I'm looking forward to more participation from the community. The last thing I wanted to talk about was, it looks like we're two for two in letters of support for broadband service providers and I'm grateful. Commissioner Anderson, I know you've done a lot of work there, so I appreciate that. And I'm encouraged by the internet service providers that are coming to the area and looking to serve Clicktack County. So thanks so much for your time, I hope everybody has a good day.
Thank you very much, Jean. Good morning, Mr. Rizzi.
Good morning, councilors or commissioners. I want to bring up, I echo everything Rick has said and it's very important that we listen to what he said and listen to it carefully. I'm sure Commissioner Anderson is looking up those RCWs to see whether or not he was correct with the meeting and whether or not we're supposed to move this meeting and close this meeting, which is what an RCW says. Again, nobody's above the law, right? And I'd like to also bring up that the sheriff, the underfunding that you're doing to his office to where he can't fill those positions is leading a shortage to our deputies on the road, providing safety and problems with our people. Again, you're hamstringing the safety. When you go to budget cuts, the last thing you should ever cut would be a budget for safety. And now you've put our Clicktack County people in safety in a bad position. So we need the safety and the security of our residents in Clicktack County. And to Lori, yes, so I understand you lied to us last week when you said you had all that information back from the sheriff. When I talked to the sheriff, he says, nope, still sitting in the safe. So you have, you know, when you did your little checkup on Anderson to see, you know, see what they have on him and I'm curious if you do that to everyone and if you're going to do it especially to the person that took over Dan's spot because he beat, you know, Amanda soundly and, you know, so now I guess it's time to do a background check on him too, I guess. So anyway, Lori, I really do feel that you need to resign. You do not handle that position correctly and it's very sad to see. So I urge you and everyone else urges you, I know in District Two, which you're supposed to be there to represent, I know that they are now wishing that you would step down so we can actually put somebody in there that looks out for not only District Two but for the whole entire Clicktack County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzi. Good morning, Gabrielle.
Yeah, hi, thank you. First off, I want to say that the commentary around how you're addressing public speak is a slippery slope. Look, public speak is the good, the bad, the ugly, the beautiful. But what would be truly ugly is if you try to put parameters around it, if you try to make it more difficult, if you try to lessen how the public reaches its elected officials. And regardless of some of the choices that individuals make in public speak, it shouldn't be tampered with. The administrative state in Clicktack County, whether it's school boards, cities or county, there is always an attempt to lessen the arena of public speak, whether they take away the time, whether they place certain parameters around it. The idea that you would take it off Zoom, Zoom presented for a public the great equalizer in getting in front of the elected officials and actually viewing these meetings. And it would be devastating if any of that got altered. Am I happy when the sheriff comes in and starts this mini smear campaign against the elected officials? Like, no, but part of that is that as a public, you can come back and clap back on that. It's nothing more than a smear campaign. Do I like hearing people say that they want to remove the commissioners from their board? No, and Lori Zoller is an outstanding commissioner and there are groups upon groups upon groups and individuals in this county that support her and that will come to her defense at any time in every corner. And we were clear about what she brings to this county. And these attempts to smear her, whether they're coming from the sheriff's department or his cronies, are just attempts to smear. And there's when a public comes back and says, yeah, that's a bridge too far and we're not in agreement and if you want to have that tussle, let's have that tussle, but she's staying where she is. The same attempts of smearing Jake over these years, this is all just part of what some people choose to do. But when it comes to a public arena and public speak, everything goes and you just have to counter any of the stuff that is incorrect, any of the stuff that is not accurate. Because what happens in this forum is that we find out what's going on with our government and we have a place in which we try to express to our government what we need to see and that has value. So I just want to say that attacking public speak because you want it to look or feel or sound differently isn't the solution. Protect it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gabby. Anybody else? We have nobody in the rooms.
Seven two one one.
Seven two one one.
Greg Wagner, see. The franchise agreement hearing notices posted by Mr. Hunter instruct the people they can be heard in person. The postings failed to supply the people with alternate remote methods to testify. Why have these remote methods been excluded from the notice? I asked the board to direct Mr. Hunter to correct the error. The comp plan states the commissioners' duties to encourage public participation in the decision-making process. When the people are not informed, they are excluded from the decision-making process. We do not yield our sovereignty to you. Ms. Neal's revenue source pie chart last week did not show any revenue from renewables. She stated it all goes to the state. My conversation with Mr. Gallagher confirmed that the county does receive revenue from the renewables, an sizable amount. This makes me question the accuracy of the budget report. Commissioners asked Mr. Gallagher to speak on this matter today. That extra revenue will change the county's financial position. How can you certify the budget without the renewable revenue being included? Rezones in the past have gone before the commissioners in a hearing and Mr. Dean's rezone should be no exception. Why isn't all the documentation relating to the rezone in today's full packet? How can the board render a decision without full review, without the facts? The commissioners must allow the people to address their concerns in the hearing. We do not want to have you make a decision without all the facts, as Mr. Anderson says that you do quite often. Surface mining occurs throughout the county. Why are there three different zonings for surface mining? Why is Mr. Dean's aggregate resource district zoning the only one with the one sentence questionable overlay? This appears to be a special favor for Mr. Zine and unfair to the other operators. How can an overlay zone apply to a person's property automatically and then supersede a conditional use permit of another person's zoning? Zoning changes are required, are requested and do not happen automatically. Maybe Mr. Edelman can clarify these inconsistencies. And Mr. Anderson, when are you going to supply me the RCWs that state Public Works are the correct department that puts up the notices for the hearing? Franchise Agreement Hearing, you failed to supply that in over six weeks now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Online again, if anybody would like to give comment? Good morning, Sherry.
Good morning, Clicktack County Commissioners. I would like to follow up on a few things. You know, you are commissioners, we'll be getting new commissioners and I agree that the commissioners that are put into place are the ones that we should keep accountable for that position. As you know, throughout the time I've been involved in click history, I got involved in watching local government because of under Canvas. And real quick with that, I never understood why the local people would have to reach into our back pockets and fight decisions of our government, of what our government, you know, and then I found up along the way that a SEPA doesn't really matter. So I questioned, why do we even have SEPAs, you know? Because we'll look at that later or whatever happened and bottom line was, the people reached into our back pockets to fight against people, an entity that was supposed to protect us and has supposed processes in place. And then when those processes don't work, you go to other processes and then you just change your rules after that. But here we are, under Canvas is going in and I hope the death toll and the injuries are low. I pray for the people around us. This was a bad, bad, bad decision on Clicktack County. So with the Dean overlay and the rezoning, I live here, I drive by it all the time. I believe it's already been mined. I believe this is just a process again being pushed through as special favor. The people that live there in the residential area has begged for the county not to do this. I hope you've listened to the Planning Commission meeting, it's on Zoom. And again, not all the documents were supplied, they didn't have any of the, you know, it's just dirty, let's just go there, it's just dirty. And the people that live there are going to suffer and their values and, you know, are going to suffer. The people that have to travel Oak Ridge Road and tell, and okay, we were told from the beginning, the public will not pay to upgrade Oak Ridge, well, yes, we will. Yes, taxpayers, you will, and if you have a bad road, sorry. We gotta, we gotta spend millions on Oak Ridge now because why? Because as Ms. Zoller said, because of the new entity going in. Yeah, so we need to do that and that's where your tax money is going to go. And I just, I don't like people being hurt, I keep going back there, I don't want people being hurt. You know, you're supposed to work for the public good and safety. And, you know, you have these processes to go, to look at things, to make sure people don't get hurt. And then as I've seen, it just gets pushed through as favors. And I know you say you do know special favors, but trust me, I have seen special favor after special favor after special favor and it's just really sad. And the sad part is, is people's lives, property, and maybe, you know, physically their lives are injured and that's sad. And so again, I hope that someday the people come back, they come back to the land and they realize what we were supposed to create and we get involved because we're to govern our government, so.
Thank you, Sherry.
Oh, is my time up?
Yeah.
My free speech.
Your music came on, yeah.
The free speech.
Yep, thank you. One more chance. Please unmute yourself and raise your hand. Not seeing anyone. Okay. So you're still typing, I guess we'll close public comment for today and move to commissioners. We have a stacked meeting, so we'll get busy with work. Jake, do you have comments? Would you want to go, still working? Yeah, Mr. Smith, I'll start with you because it's very simple. Thank you for bringing for the comments on the vet service, we can check into that for you, I haven't heard anything. So we can look into that for you and we're glad you're back, good to see you again. And Jean, thank you always for following and staying and being positive, we appreciate it. Gabby, I agree, I spent a lot of time over the last few days looking at public comment, what that means and what that means for our county. Actually, looking at everything, public comment by counties is handled differently in different counties. It's a wide variety, but it isn't mandatory, it's something that the commissioners offer to the public as a nicety. That's something that they want to hear from you and they're willing to open that up. It isn't mandatory, we're not a hearing where they're collecting information. So this is just something that the commissioners offer to be able to communicate with their constituents. That being said, it is a First Amendment right, I agree and I agree people deserve that. The unfortunate part comes when people misuse that. And then their comments are fraught with misconceptions, innuendos, conspiracy theories. And we go down that track a lot during our public comment. Does that mean we should cut it off? No, they have that right. But it does mean to me that the public needs to be very careful. And if you hear things during our public comment that we're receiving, there's a lot of places to fact check things and you can also always call the commissioner or email us and we're willing to work with you and provide anything you need. I can tell you both the sources today that were on the negative edge, have never called me, have never sat down with me, have never asked for the other side of the story. So there's always two sides or sometimes multifaceted sides. But that would be my advice today to the public is just make sure before you get on a bus that's going somewhere, that you're on the right bus and you understand what you're hearing. But thank you. And Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry, but I'm short today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone, for always calling in and offering your comments and for showing up in public. One of the things when I ran for election was increasing transparency in county government. That's when we started with the Zoom, that's when we started with the video. Then after a few years, we were finally able to Zoom the workshop meetings so that everybody could be involved. What I've noticed is that people get involved and the people that are watching all the meetings don't seem to sometimes be listening to the reports that staff gives. And that's where part of that transparency and goal of opening up county government is also the requirement that you do your research, that you look and you follow through with what the staff provides. And special meetings, Rick, are a regular thing, they are nothing special. Having to push off all of the information is something that you don't want to see government do. You want to see the vendors get paid, you want to see people get paid on a timely manner. And a special meeting can be called, all three commissioners were present when we announced it. So that portion of RCW forty-two thirty zero eight zero was followed. Also, it has been put forward on the website and the agenda and it was announced far longer than the one day that was required. The requirements for a special meeting were met, as far as I understand. And that allows us to have a meeting. You'll also notice that we did not add anything to the agenda because that's something you cannot do the day of, even if something comes up on special meetings. There are rules in order to ensure that that happens. You asked fair questions, Rick, why was the sheriff doing an investigation? If supposedly there was an investigation into me, why was I never contacted? I have all sorts of questions as well, that's why at the last meeting I asked the sheriff to please provide those documents, if he has them in his safe or his evidence locker so that we can review them. And I'd be happy to answer your questions once I get a chance to review them. I don't believe we've heard anything from the sheriff since that time. One thing I can tell you though is we are not cutting funding to the sheriff. We have increased the sheriff's budget, you can go back to any of our budget meetings, you can go look at our supplemental budget that we just passed to the sheriff on the tune of close to $600,000 this year, the sheriff's budget has been increased, not decreased. You also bring up either you or Anthony Rizzi, we're hamstringing safety and he cannot fill his positions. We have not cut his budget, he has the same number of organizational charts in the 2025 budget. How he chooses to hire people for those positions is up to the sheriff, not up to us. But we are not cutting his budget. I apologize, Madam Chair, I was not listening to everything you said when you were, because I was trying to do my research. So I'll just respond, Mr. Smith, I hope Commissioner Zoller said that she would get to the bottom of what you're hearing with regards to the Veteran Service Officer. In terms of getting paid, that's not something the Veteran Service Officer usually does if they're veterans in need. That goes through a different organization, yeah, it's an actual different organization that's part of the county. And I hope that she's going to look into that as well. Mr. Rizzi, I did check, all of the documents that were part of the Water Conservancy Board were redelivered back to the Water Conservancy Board from the sheriff. So I hate to say it, but Ms. Zoller was not lying at that moment. Actually, I don't hate to say it, I'm glad to say it. Gabrielle, thank you as always. Our First Amendment rights and our ability to question government is something that's fundamental to the United States of America. And also to not have people be vindictive or malicious towards you for speaking up and asking questions. To me, that's a fundamental right and it's something that I always take very seriously. Mr. Wagner, we've told you multiple times, we cannot speak about something that will be coming in front of the board and by now, after four years, you should know that it's improper to speak to the Board of County Commissioners about something that is going. to the Board of County Commissioners about something that is going to be coming in front of the board next week. Um, in a normal, uh, setting, you would actually be gavelled down. And I respect Ms. Zoller for not gaveling people down and we just sit here and listen, but um, that is something that you are absolutely not supposed to speak about. Ms. Bosque. No rules were changed. If you disagree with a decision that the hearings examiner has, it is your right and your responsibility to take appropriate action, which was taken in this case when someone disagreed or disagreed with a decision from the hearings examiner. That then goes through the judicial process. That by itself does not create special favors. That is actually the following, the rule of law. That is ensuring that the process, um, does not get derailed. And I would say the same to you, Ms. Uh, Bosque. You should know by now that if something is coming from before the board, it is not appropriate to speak on that before the Board of County Commissioners. And with that, we have a very full agenda. I'll be back. My time is up.
Thank you. So consent agenda. Madam Chair. I'm sorry, Scott.
If you don't mind, I think there was enough, this is of public interest on one item on your consent agenda. I think it's worth just clarifying. So the item for the scheduling meeting for the James Dean aggregate overlay zone is only to schedule a meeting. But why that was not included, any information was included in packet. If you do schedule this meeting for your packet next week, you'll get the full record uh, that went for the planning commission.
Thank you. Steven Creed.
Commissioners, I request that, uh, consent agenda, I think it's item six, the contract with aspect consulting being removed from the consent agenda. We will resubmit it at some point in the future.
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
All about process.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the consent agenda with nine items, pulling number six.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-four cents.
And I will step down in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. So now we have, um, our first department update from Bill Frans, our jail administrator for Department of Corrections. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I made a few notes. The last four days, um, have been, have been great. Uh, I'd like to start off by saying, uh, Click Attack County welcomed me with open arms. Um, I've met a lot of stakeholders, sheriff's office, um, a lot of our jail staff. I've had an ability to tour the jail and look at the, uh, physical infrastructure, um, looked at some of the policies and the procedures. Um, but, um, yeah, looked at the same, uh, sanitation and security inspection processes, uh, equipment needs and priorities. Um, vendors is a big, as is a big, um, you know, the, the rebranding and how we can rebrand without having to, uh, spend a lot of money. Simple things like using the same footprint of the patch that we have means we don't have to buy new jackets and things like that. And so trying to, um, get it rebranded without having to spend, uh, unnecessary county funds. And that's about it. Just a lot of, uh, meeting people. Uh, I wish I could remember all of their names, but, um, everybody was, was very nice. Uh, and welcoming and the county's removing barriers for me to fail. So, uh, it's all on me. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that challenge.
Thank you. You have any questions, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, are you gonna have a thirty-day, night, thirty-sixty, ninety plan of attack, things you want to work on? Uh, when can we expect to see that?
So to, the things I want to work on, I mean, I still have a lot of assessing to do. Um, it starts with, for me, you know, our, our job in, in corrections is to protect the public. So physical plant to ensure that people can't escape the jail uh, and put people in harm's way. But the physical and procedural securities, it'll take me a good week to get into that and to see what we're looking at. So I would hope to have that within two weeks of, of that. I mean, I, I came with one, uh, but as soon as I saw, uh, what, you know, it, it went out the window. So, um, yeah, just re, relearning, um, some of the things and how we do business here. But I'm working with them.
No, it sounds good. And I've heard good things. People were excited to meet you and they've had, uh, are building a good relationship and going forward and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand about hitting in the ground and everything changes. So.
Sure.
Glad you're flexible.
Yeah, absolutely. I've got nothing to do for two months. I just focus on this.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Thank you so much. Welcome to you again.
Yeah.
Okay. Let us know if you need anything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, commissioners report?
Yeah, Madam Chair, on our agenda, we have a letter of support for Click Network LLC's broadband equity. Um, this is for the B dollars. Um, this is the, the federal dollars that flow through the state Washington Broadband Office. Um, I'm very happy to say that, um, with this letter, um, if the state approves all three of these, uh, letters of support, uh, we would have fiber deployed, um, great, far greater throughout the, the county. Um, and I did have a meeting with Click Network's, um, CEO, um, to talk about what their plans are, um, what their timing looks like. Um, I did get that they are not going to be, um, I, we have multiple emails where, um, constituents are saying they would love to see either the county or the PUD take on this kind of fiber deployment to the home. Um. And, um, I don't, the county, it's not a core county function. We don't have the twenty-five percent, um, for the match. Uh, PUD has not been interested over the long term. Um, I think this is a really great uh, position that'll put us in. Um, I really wish that, you know, six years ago, when the CAF two dollars were brought to the table, um, that the, the local exchange carriers would have put in fiber rather than just ESL, because now we're rebuilding areas that they've already been paid to build and all this comes from the public money. And it's really sad. Um, after all these years, this is kind of what it's taken to get there, but, um, it, the idea that Click Networks had, um, seemed sound, um, for their deployment, and I'd be happy to sign the letter of support.
Yep, after all this time, it's good to see. Even if it's changing progress, it's progress. We might get some broadband out there still.
So, you know, and with that, you know, since they're not going to be an open access carrier, their odds of getting, there's going to be multiple rounds of B dollars, um, funding rounds. And so there's not a likelihood that they'll get through in the first round, but then it might get through in the second or third round, um, for those. Um, and I don't believe that the other carrier is open access either. So it may not be everything everyone wants, but it is still better.
Progress.
Absolutely.
Okay, did you need a motion or is that?
Uh, as long as it's consensus.
Okay, yes.
Sign it.
We will sign that letter of support for that today. Um, we've got about twenty minutes till our next update. Um, department.
You want to go first? You have time? Or at least a portion of it?
Your time.
Thank you. Figure out how to get you on the hot seat all the time.
That's right. Well, my report's gonna be brief. Uh, everybody's out doing their thing. So, um, I'm gonna present some information. Uh, IT, I, I did not send it out. Uh, they're still working on creating a warranty software license master list, so we can keep track of, you know, a lot of things are moving to subscriptions for licensing. So they're creating a master list, which will also help in that the, uh, the auditors, when they're gathering information.
Are we creating it or updating it? I thought we always had a licensed master list.
Well, this is a, uh, covers everything warranties and licenses and, and, uh, so they're either expanding what they already had or, uh, and I know there were some, uh, some software licenses that weren't necessarily under IT that they're trying to gather altogether. So, and I believe there was a change in the audit last year, and we have to provide, uh, to new information, uh, as part of the audit. So this will help at least us provide the correct information to the auditor's office and hopefully make it easier for them. Um, server replacement plan, hardware's been installed in there, uh, migrated all of the virtual servers in the Pioneer Center and powered down the old server. I end up grading, uh, they're still working the, uh, with that transition team. Whenever needed, necessary. And the fiber optic from this building, behavioral health, has been installed. The equipment's been purchased. Um, and we just hooked it up. The connection at this end was ten gig and the connection at the behavioral health was one. And one gig wouldn't have happened when that department's fully staffed out and functioning. So the new equipment we purchased was ten gig. So it's ten gig to ten gig, which will have, will handle, uh, any staffing, uh, video, audio that they will have in the future. So that goes live Thursday, it's my understanding. So that's IT on, um, solid waste. Uh, George had put together really nice, um, the visual. Uh, I'm not going to submit that today because I want to wait and get one more month. And I think it'd be a good year-end report where he's broken, uh, the, the issues he's working on down by, excuse me, title and department. So I think rather than give it to you today, I'm going to wait until the end of the year and then it'll, it'll give us a, uh, snapshot for the whole year. But I can say, as you may recall, we were, uh, allotted three roll-off containers, uh, the big containers from Republic. And, uh, today we haven't issued one. But, uh, we did get a request from, uh, property owner in, in, uh, George's working Republic to assist. And as, in addition, we received two hundred um, transfer station vouchers. We've only used about fifteen percent. In our first meeting with Republic, we agreed to be fairly conservative. We're not just handing them out. There's monetary value. We track them by serial number. So, um, as George sees a need, then, uh, he issues them out. So our goal is not to do two hundred a year. Um, frankly, his focus this year has been as much on, um, of the litter or the nuisances that would require it. So, uh, it's nice to have them, but we're being fairly conservative, um, working with Republic on when we issue those out to folks. Um, and so I think that's it for solid waste. HR didn't really have an update today. I will say that we had, uh, a great meeting with, um, Bill, the jail administrator and the union and union representatives and, uh, to discuss uh, the overall transition into work towards getting, uh, an MOA in place regarding the transition. But more than that, I think it was a good, a good, uh, opportunity for for them to meet Bill and, uh, and talk about their concerns and, and, uh, I thought he did a great job. So, uh, I think it was very, very productive. And I think the union thought so as well. So that's, uh, that was good. And then Jen's update today is already on the agenda. I think she's gonna follow at some point today to adopt the budget. And, uh, so McKenzie and Joe's report, we, we have a, uh, follow-up meeting this week with, um, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, be the second meeting. This year's goal is to get them together and get to know each other and lay out the scope of work for next year, which would be a very busy year for the, for that group. It's a great bunch. I think, uh, the reps from at least one of the cities is interested in putting together a program which we can, they can access that funding as well. Our goal is not to turn back any of that grant to the state. And if the city has a program they want to put forward for discussion, we're always open to that. And statutorily, they have a, the right to do that. So we're excited about that. Uh, McKenzie attended the, um, Solid Waste Group Managers Meeting at, uh, WAC meeting this year in Vancouver. And that was very productive. And she brought back some good ideas from other counties that, uh, we'll, uh, talk to you about the first of the year, about certain programs. She, she gave me a piece of information. I'm not going to quote it exactly, but but I, I think she told me eighty percent of the garments made wind up in landfills. So clothes, at some point, it winds up in a landfill. Uh, there is a country that purchases a lot of that by, in bulk. And then they redistribute it, but, uh, I think she said eighty percent winds up in a landfill. And, uh, that's, that was staggering to me. If you think about where clothes ultimately wind up after they're worn out, then, uh, so she's, another county has put together a program to help address that need and maybe address some of the, um, low-income homeless issues, uh, on the providing, uh, garments. So she'll break that for us. It's not like a great program and it's been done successfully in at least one other county. And then ultimately reduces them out that goes into the landfill. So I think that's about it. Kind of short and sweet. Everybody?
No questions here? Thank you.
We need a couple of minutes. Thank you.
So the, um, jail had some, uh, at least one opening and correction officer, maybe more that had been posted with civil service, but now the transition, they're no longer subject to civil service. So we thought it was prudent, uh, to ask for permission to post that vacancy, uh, as any other department would do and not just assume since it was posted under civil service that, kind of start off on the right foot. So was there more than one?
There's two, two. Two correction, yeah, two correctional officers, full-time correctional officers.
There'd be one posting with multiple, multiple openings. So if you're agreeable to that with HR, we'll post that. It's kind of filled.
For the public's sake, that means you don't have to do specific tests under civil.
Yeah, the civil service was, uh, basically predated HR departments in many cases and established rules for hiring and testing and discipline. Um, and it applies to, uh, sheriff, department sheriff office employees. So when the, um, jail moved under the Board of Commitmenters and no longer were subject to civil service. So now we will do the hiring process for this jail, just like we do for any other department or office.
Okay, yeah. And it posted.
And employees are still protected and covered by the collective bargaining agreement and the county employee handbook. So, um, ultimately they didn't lose any protections.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter. We can go early up here, ready?
Okay.
Did you drag it out to make him suffer?
I did.
Don't be fair.
Good morning, Mr. Hunter and Seth Skralla from Public Works Update.
Okay, um, set agenda for us was fine. And, uh, we have no pay estimates, but that will go to construction.
Not much happening in construction. We're just closing down projects that were, uh, completed in twenty twenty-four and getting ready for the new season. Uh, on road design, sunny side road overlay is on ad, will be opening on the seventeenth. Bridge repair bundles, we're reviewing the ninety percent plans from the consultant. Biglin Highway Overlay, the award was on the consent agenda this morning. White plastic edge lines, we're planning for December ads still. Uh, just waiting on a Washington's approval. Pur warning signs and guideposts, we're still working through the approval process through Washington to get those final plans and advertisement out. And the road safety plan update, we have a draft consultant agreement that's being reviewed one more time.
Okay, on the maintenance side, we acquired a bunch of the state isn't using their red rock anymore in Bingen. So they gave a cuss, so we're going to haul it. Some of it will go to the landfill because that's we, that's part of our agreement, we buy them rock to put on our road. I didn't make up the agreement, that's just the way it is. Just they're putting it on our road. But so we'll use some of that red rock over there and some of it will, a lot, the majority of it will stay on the west side.
So do we have to move it all right now or can we slowly move it all?
They want it out of their shed, so we're moving it.
What are they putting in there? Replacement?
My guess is they're probably putting some sort of an E I C or solvent. I'm not, I shouldn't say that because I don't know that for sure. So that's what we're doing on the east side, we're doing winter work on the west side, we're hauling rock, grading some roads and winter work. Let's see, Superior Court. We put in some of the benches, we'll put in more of the benches, again, will be ninety-five percent complete. Christmas bazaar went well, we're finally, unless some birthdays come up, we don't have any events until February. Jail upgrade still on the same path, water bottle, our water bottle filler will be installed today at White Salmon, so we'll cross that one off the list. Dallasport Community Center, concrete steps landing and block evolved and poured, so all concrete work is done there. We have to put up the sign, we got run off for the bazaar, so we weren't able to get the sign installed. But we will this Wednesday when the guys come back and it will be done in Dallasport. So that brings us to the airport. So we're still looking at going to bid. Next week. Part of that includes the fact, I mean, we'll be working around the clock again to go to bid, so the first page. So everybody's aware, it's done, it'll be done in two projects, one is the civil work and one is the building. So if you look at it, all the other, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, those were all part of the original plan and we did the whole thing. We don't have the money to do the whole thing, so we're doing what is in blue. We still may end up gaining a lot, we still may end up gaining a couple lots. Because we have to move the material, there's a big stockpile of material where the pond sits. And where lot fifteen is, you know, instead of moving it, we're going to move it to the big pile that sits down here now. But instead of moving all that, we're just, lot twenty-five, twenty-six is actually low. And it will be low, instead of moving that material over here and then putting it back again, it'd be just as simple to push it over. And we're stubbing out the utilities there, so that lot could become pretty much available. There's also an opportunity to look at lot eighteen, so if the idea is, is we won't do it that way, it'll be under twenty-five percent with everything. And if it works, we get good prices, then we will do, we'll add those two lots to it. We're still within our original amount, original A P E. Because the reason, when I talked to Matthew, they were kind of, how did you get there that quick? As long as you stay within your original footprint that you first advertised, you are okay. And our original footprint was pretty much the whole thing because we knew we had to do something with that. So that's kind of where we are with the civil work and that would be the first thing that we would go out to bid. And we're looking to have something to the board next week to go out to bid. With the eighteenth that has to bid for four weeks, the reason we're pushing it is we need to do the mass ex in the winter time. Or we're fighting dust storms and everything else. Now, the other sheet, I apologize, it's just a markup because the back sheet, that is the building. And you could see everything they asked and you see the slashes through. So they would like, they wanted a tool room, a mechanical room, a mazening, a wash area and all that. There's not enough money for all that, it's great to ask for everything, but those all go away, they wanted a big office space, we reduced it to twenty-five hundred square feet, that's classes and office space. And so, and the building, the reason it's only drawn like this is the building size, this is the full-size fifteen thousand square foot building. The building will shrink, that's where those offices go away. But we haven't drawn it up because they're talking about maybe flipping the building or making it eighty by a hundred or some other configuration. We're still kind of working with them, it will go on lot seventeen, it used to go on lot nineteen. So it's, we may have to turn it and not be square just because of the configuration of the lot is not as, seventeen is not as deep as nineteen. That's kind of the update unless you have any questions. Yeah, that building, that was just kind of a quick oversight, there'll be more on the building when we go to bid, but that won't be probably until February or so, January, February.
So how are we going to handle, if we had built it with all of it inside here, how are we going to handle turnarounds if we didn't finish the road going around through there?
Well, we're building turnarounds now, they don't show on here, but there'll be a turnaround at each. We, we have to do that, we require everybody else to do it, so we.
That's what I wondered.
So no, there'll be turnaround at each end. This, this side here, we don't have it marked on, on seventeen, but if you look over here, we do have the hammerhead marked on the bottom one. On for Wheeler Avenue, that one does have its, has a turnaround there. It says end of sanitary, but that is where the, that's where the T, that'd be a hammerhead.
Okay, and then you're using Case Avenue as your other hammerhead?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so that's why I, I kind of figured that part out, but then if we had built all the way up there to the top by the well where we originally went, where was the hammerhead going to be up there?
It would be, matter of fact, it's kind of there, if you look at under.
Built it into the lot then?
Yeah, under track B because we would use it as a driveway into the well.
Oh, okay.
Which, which is what we work with the developers to do too. We always tell them, you know, you might as well encompass your last approach into your hammerhead, so you're not just building your hammerhead for extra build. Now that way we would, that way we could use it as the approach to the, to that well, if we were doing, yes.
I'll review it and get back to you if any questions.
Okay. We are sitting down with the parties this week. With the city and the airport on tomorrow, with Commissioner Zoller. And then we have a meeting with the Water District on Thursday. That Rick and I are meeting with Scott on Thursday to discuss, so everybody's on board. That's all we have.
Busy week. I'll probably come see you later too.
Okay, we'll be here. Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fifteen minutes before public hearing, property tax and adopting the budget. So we have documents to sign, there's more to do.
Would you like to call a recess for fifteen?
Sure. Would you use it for a couple of things?
Yes, I've got some phone calls that have been missing. Madam Chair, I would call a recess until ten fifteen A M.
And I'll step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we will see you back here at ten fifteen. Welcome back, it's ten fifteen and we're going to move into our public hearing in regards to continuation of the three hearings held on December third. And please note that written comment was left open until Friday, December sixth, twenty twenty-four regarding property tax levies, twenty twenty-five, twenty through thirty, capital improvement plan and the twenty twenty-five annual budget. Did we receive any written comments, do you know? So, hi Jen, are you with us?
Good morning, I am.
Good morning, good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Okay, so we will start with opening the public hearing for the twenty twenty-five property tax levy amounts. Now, Commissioner deliberation. Do you consider any new information presented during the continuation?
It does not sound like we're receiving any further information.
So we don't need any clarification or any additional from you, Jen? So I will make a move to, I guess you have to make a motion. I will make a motion to close the hearing. Close the public hearing on the twenty twenty-five property tax levy amounts.
Madam Chair, I have a second motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I would just mention that when you look at the information, what you see is, is that each year the property tax levies go down both for the road as well as for the general fund. We all know that everyone's houses are praising and going up for the vast majority of people. And so when you levelize that amongst all of the taxpayers, the amount of total revenue that the county brings in goes up by one percent. Some people's portions that they pay into the county general fund will go up by more than one percent, some will go down by more than one percent. All depends on where the assessor is doing their assessments that year and where you move in comparison to everyone else. So that is the big changes you do notice though, that the percentage that you pay goes down per thousand. We can't, we, the Board of County Commissioners have no impact on what happens with the assessed value of your homes and how that changes and whether or not it's a year in which yours is going up or moving more than the average. The idea is, is that if everybody's homes went up by the exact same amount, say two or three percent, then your total amount that you pay into the county would still go up by only one percent. With that though, because everybody's homes move at different rates, that can change. But as the whole, what we are doing is, is of course trying to provide services as best we can at the lowest possible cost to the taxpayers.
Thank you for that clarification. So there was a discussion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, so we'll move on to opening the public hearing and continuation for the twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty capital improvement plan. And was there any written comment received from that? So any discussion or any clarification or additional details needed, Mr. Anderson?
No, the capital improvement plan is pretty self-explanatory.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing on the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty capital improvement plan. I would have to have a second.
We have to close it? I don't think you have to have a motion to close the hearing, do you?
We just did on the last one.
I thought we actually motioned to pass.
We, we closed the hearing and then we moved to.
Yeah, motion on the back.
We take a vote on closing it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I made a motion to.
All right, I will second the motion to close the hearing.
Okay, and no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes to close the hearing, so we need a motion on.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five capital improvement plan.
And I'll step down in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for the twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty capital improvement plan. So we will open the public hearing as a continuation on the annual twenty twenty-five budget. Noting that it was left open until Friday, the sixth, for comment, was there any written comment received? Just on the budget? No?
No, I, no, nobody.
Nobody received, okay. So do you have any, so there's no deliberation about new information from written comment, but do you need any clarification or additional details?
Ms. Neal, we had, I think, I believe, two comments that were provided by the public on the budget. Did you do any research or have any clarification on those comments?
Um, I, I, I have a statement.
Okay.
I take great pride in ensuring that the information I provide is accurate, transparent and reliable. To maintain this standard, I rely solely on data sourced from the county's financial system, which is audited by both county auditor and the state auditor. This approach is not only best practice, but also a responsibility that I take seriously to uphold the integrity of the financial reporting. It ensures that all information shared is verifiable, unbiased and reflective of the actual financial records. In response to the recent inquiry regarding revenue received by renewable energy corporations, I want to clarify that the question did not specify the type of revenue being referenced. As such, my initial response was generalized, noting that some revenues might come from the state, a detail that is not visible in the county's financial system. Based on the context, it seems the inquiry is referring to property tax revenue. However, our financial system categorizes revenue by type, not by source, which means it does not identify specific entities contributing to property tax collections. Additionally, I do not have access to the treasurer's system for detailed property tax data and am limited to the same tools available to the public for looking up individual properties. I understand that this may seem, sometimes lead to limitations in the data that I provide. However, my commitment to using auditable and official data is critical for maintaining accountability and public trust. I encourage anybody with concerns or questions to reach out to me and I'm happy to explain the process and the standards that guide my work. Thank you all for your understanding as I continue to prioritize accuracy and transparency in all aspects of financial reporting.
I just, are, are we still asking for clarification or are we under deliberation?
Um, let's see, we're still in clarification or additional details, motion to close the hearing. And I will second, step down in second and open it up. Deliberation?
Right, and then we can deliberate.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion adopting the twenty twenty-five annual budget.
And I will step down in second.
And just to follow up on what Ms. Neal said, I understand the, the question that was asked on the budget. I also understand the question that was followed up in public comment. And that we used to have information that came from the treasurer on a yearly basis, I believe, on the total tax receipts from the green energy companies in terms of property tax receipts. That was something that was. That was something that was regularly done. That is not something that Ms. Neal has, nor is it something that is, is, has I believe ever been inputted into the budget because the budget doesn't care where it comes from. Your budget just cares where the information comes from. And so I would just mention that it would be nice to see that money, that, that information and it's not, I, what is there, maybe thirty different? Now, there's, it probably, it's more difficult than that because you've got to look at each individual parcel number and everything else that comes with the green energy. So it's not a simple answer, but it is something that, that can be looked at and something I think would be great. What I would like to see is the total amount that the green energy pays in each year as a perspect, as a percentage of the overall budget to see if that is going up and or going down based on repowering and is depreciation and new bills and to see where those numbers are getting, and I think that would help people understand. The one thing I would just add in on the levy amounts is I just want to be very clear that that property tax levy, one other reason why your percentage might not be dropping at the rate total is as if the total amount of money being paid in by the green energy companies is actually falling rather than increasing over that course of time. So if your tax levy went from a dollar, a dollar ten cents and now it's at a dollar per thousand, if the green energy companies were, weren't depreciating, that might be, you might be down at eighty or ninety cents. Granted, don't hold me to these numbers. I'm just saying that that's, that's what could be occurring. The only way to look at that is to look at where the green energy has been sitting over a course of a period of time to look at that decline. It is again something that is primary with regards to what we're trying to deal with, with the, at the state level with legislation to try and fix it. Those fixes take time. And I hope that when I am gone, the next commissioner that serves on the legislative steering committee is going to take this up as their mantle and their challenge to get through the legislative session this year. If there's anything I can do to help that person, whoever serves in that role, I'm glad to do that after my term's up.
And thank you, Jen, for clarifying that. And I do appreciate your professionalism and your ability to dive into things and bring it down to a level that the public and ourselves can understand. I do appreciate that work you do for us. Okay, so we had motion and second discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for approval of the twenty twenty five annual budget. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
You have one more thing.
About one of the property tax levies, I don't think she has made a final proposal.
Right, I don't think we said, I, all those in favor?
No, no. Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five property tax levy. That's what you?
Okay. I will step down in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Thanks for that catch. I thought we jumped one step there. I was going to ask.
I just don't, we usually don't make a motion to close the public hearing. Usually the chair just closes the public hearing and then we move on to making.
Approve of?
To approve of.
Yeah.
I think I'm seeing too that each department is setting up a structure and helping.
It's a little different, yeah.
So maybe we need to have them run them through you, so you set the structure. Plug, plug their information into a standard. I appreciate it, but I appreciate their teachings.
And that might be the proper way to do it according to Robert's rules, that you have to make a motion to close the public hearing. I'm not positive.
Well, we covered.
I mean, we've always done it the same way for so long. I never thought about it, but nope, it's a?
It's all good.
There is prerogative.
Okay. So that took care of our annual budget information stuff, so we're early, but I see we do have Rebecca in the room and I appreciate that. You've been monitoring a new to come down to cover our space and you have a busy agenda today. You might want to explain to the public too why you have so many on.
Okay. So I noticed that you were running ahead of schedule and that that is down a little early to help you keep moving along. So the reason why there are so many today is because the county interests something called the freeze, which is where at that point, once that date is hit, I do not know the date, I do not make the date. I am provided with the date. The assessor's office and the treasurer's office determine that date. And it's for freezing the values for working on property taxes and assessments. I think for them to work together. So at some point I do, I'm not from either one of those departments, so I can't go into detail for either one of them, but it's just a certain point where I cannot get any more approvals for getting it done this year until the date lifts. Once that date lifts, it's usually about the time property taxes come out for the following year. And at that point, even if I have projects that have been completed, just waiting to come from the commissioners, they would need to pay the full year twenty twenty five tax in order to get it to step. So that's kind of why it was a scramble to get these seven on the count.
How, how long is that you freezes? Two months usually? How long is it?
I do not know for sure. It usually starts in December and it lifts, I think somewhere around the end of February. It's usually about the time that you get your property taxes from the treasurer's office.
It just seems like we did this. That year went so fast. I remember you coming in and doing this and people saying, why do you have so many right?
Yes, and so, and that's kind of the scramble and it's when this happens too unfortunately, because I have a large amount of projects. So right now I'm focusing on these ones not getting stalled. So some other projects, I may not be as on top of at this moment as I could be because I'm focusing my attention right here as I don't want these delayed. Not that the other ones are being delayed, but this is kind of the top priority at this point, can this far get them approved and recorded. Okay, so I think I have them in order. Do you want me to?
Your weight for?
Okay. My name glasses on. So this is a boundary line adjustment for BLA number two zero two four dash zero six is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels zero five one seven one three five one zero 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 four zero zero and zero five one seven one three zero 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 six zero zero off of Fox Canyon Road. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section thirteen township five range seventeen of the Willamette Meridian, Quiket County in the Gondal vicinity. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed. Saint just have been obtained from the road, health, planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve the boundary line adjustment and motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two zero two four dash oh six. And this is for Michelle and Greg Watson.
Madam Chair, I've had a chance to review BLA twenty twenty four dash zero six for Michelle and Gregory Watson. My motion is to approve.
And I'll step down in second discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you.
So we run to the next one. The next one is a plat alteration for Donnie and Wendy Hodges. So the purpose of this plat alteration is when something is recorded on the face of a plat, if it was established by using the face of the plat, you have to go through a plat alteration to remove it or alter it. If it's done on a separate document and then noted on the plat, that document can maybe buy separately, but if it's used by the face of the plat, it goes through a plat alteration. So the purpose of this plat alteration has to do with taking an exclusive easement and making it non-exclusive. So I will go, this is for Donnie Wendy Hodges, short plat number SPL two zero two four dash one five alt. Person number so four, one six, one nine, one nine, zero, seven, zero, two, zero, zero and zero four, one six, one nine, zero, seven, zero, three, zero, one, zero, zero. Is a proposal to alter the exclusive easement created on the face of previously booked short plat number SPL two zero zero seven dash three zero. This alteration will reduce the easement width from sixty feet to forty feet and exclusive to non-exclusive. The proposed short plat alteration is located within a portion of section nineteen township four range sixteen of the Willamette Meridian, Quiket County, Washington, in the Gondal vicinity. The administrative review of the short plat alteration has been completed. Saint just have been obtained from the road, health, planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it is in the public's interest to approve the short plat, a motion needs to be granted for final approval of SPL two zero two four dash one five alt.
It's nice to see when people can work things out. Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve short plat SPL two zero two four dash one five A L T.
And I'll step down in second, motion in a second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, motion passes.
I think to go ahead with the next one. Okay, so the next one is the same property, just the boundary line adjustment, which needed that alteration to be done before the adjustment could be made. So this is for BLA two zero two four dash oh eight for Donnie Wendy Hodges. Boundary line adjustment number BLA two zero two four dash oh eight. It's a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels zero four, one six, one nine, zero, seven, three, four, zero, one, zero, 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 four, one, six, one, nine, one, nine, zero, seven, zero, two, zero, zero and zero four, one, six, one, nine, zero, seven, zero, three, zero, one, zero, zero of the Porchiefeng Road. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section nineteen township four range sixteen of the Willamette Meridian, Quiket County, Washington, Gondal vicinity. The administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Saint just have been obtained from the road, health, planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve the boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two zero two four dash oh eight.
Madam Chair, I've had a chance to review two zero two four dash zero eight. My motion is to approve.
And I'll step down in second in a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you.
So I am moving on to BLA two zero two four dash oh seven for Watson and Lynch. This boundary line adjustment is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels zero five one seven, one five, five, one dash zero, 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 two, zero, zero and zero five, one, seven, one, five, five, one, zero, 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 one, zero, zero off of Corbett Road. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section fifteen township five range seventeen of the Willamette Meridian, Quiket County, Washington, in the Gondal vicinity. Administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Saint just have been obtained from road, health, planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve the boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two zero two four dash oh seven.
Madam Chair, having before SPL twenty twenty four dash zero seven, and having reviewed that, my motion is to approve.
And I'll step down in second in a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you.
I'm going to move on to boundary line adjustment two zero two four dash one two for Alicia McKenzie. This one is to eliminate a proper good boundary line to go from two lots to one. The boundary line adjustment number BLA two zero two four dash one two is a proposal to eliminate the common property line between parcels zero four, I'm sorry, zero three, one, zero, zero, two, zero, 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 eight, zero, zero and zero three, one, zero, zero, two, 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 one, two, zero, one, zero, zero off of State Highway one forty one. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section two township three range ten of the Willamette Meridian, east of the Willamette Meridian, Quiket County, Washington, in the White Senate vicinity. Administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Saint just have been obtained from the road, health, planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve the boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two zero two four dash one two.
How many times have we done a BLA to remove a lot?
And I think this is second on this year, to where they combined the lots into?
I won't surprise you. I always thought you couldn't use a BLA. I thought on boundary line you had to keep a lot and keep a lot. You couldn't remove a lot, you couldn't delete a lot.
It's a not elimination, a not nine elimination.
So that's, so that a lot line elimination to me would be different than a boundary adjustment. I guess if, as long as it's still there, it's under the same R C Ws. It's just we're calling it a boundary line, but really it's a lot line.
Yeah.
All right.
Madam Chair, having reviewed BLA twenty twenty four dash one two, my motion is to approve.
Now I'll step down in second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Happened last time, I think something was going on. We were very busy and you were like a chatterbox. It was like, and you were out of breath and you were?
Yes, this is very calm this time. It is. So last year we were in the position of it took a bit to figure out who was going to sign the minors for the planning department. Because of the?
Oh, the transition, yeah.
So I'm going to move on to Lipinski, BLA two zero two four dash one five. Boundary line adjustment number BLA two zero two four dash twenty five is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels zero two, one, three, two, seven, zero, seven dash one, six, zero, four, zero, zero and zero two, one, three, two, seven, zero, seven, one, six, zero, one, zero, zero off of Shetland Street. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section twenty seven township two range thirteen east of the Willamette Meridian, Quiket County, Washington, in Dallas Ford. The administrative review of the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Saint just have been obtained from the road, health, planning departments and treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment and motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA two four dash one five.
Madam Chair, we have before us BLA twenty twenty four dash one five. My motion is to approve.
And I'll step down in second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Aye, motion passes, thank you. This is the second page to that, I think, too.
One.
Oh, that makes sense.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to shortcut number two zero two three dash one, zero. The applicant is Look At That Big Tree LLC. The pet number BLA two zero two three dash one, three is proposal to create two lots from parcel. Zero five, one, six, two, eight, zero, 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 five, zero, zero. The proposed shortcut is located within a portion of section twenty-eight township five. Range sixteen, east of the Willamette Meridian. Clicktack County, Washington, in the Goldendale vicinity. The administrative review of the short file has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road, health, planning departments and the Treasurer's Office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this shortcut, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL two zero two three dash one, zero.
Well, I'm glad we're getting twenty twenty-three shut down at the end of twenty twenty-four. What was the holdup, Madam?
Honestly, uh this one? Not really sure, but sometimes. Sometimes we go several months without hearing anything on the project until like October comes around and say, we all of a sudden get. More documents on that was needed and, but this one, I'm not really sure. What the holdup was, when we get the paperwork from the African or surveyor, we. Take it along, but if there are dry spells to where we don't get anything.
Madam Chair. We have before us uh short plot SPL twenty twenty-three dash one, zero, uh Look At That Big Tree LLC. Having reviewed it, my motion is to approve.
And I will step down in second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
New business and unfinished business, Mr. Anderson.
We received an email this morning, actually. Yeah, from. The University of Delaware Research.
I saw that.
I got back to them and let her know we can't meet as a group.
Okay.
So, but I did pencil in the time for next Wednesday, so I'm gonna try to meet.
Oh, good, thank you. I had something on my agenda and I'd actually sent it upstairs to Scott for him to look at, so that's great. Thank you. Thank you very much, thank you Rebecca, good job. Not anything under unfinished business.
Uh, no, if it's not on the agenda, we can't deal with it, it's a special meeting, so we can't take decisions.
Okay.
And we don't have anything for second session? Hey. Um, Madam Chair, noting that there is um nothing uh further that we are allowed to do. I'm just making sure we don't have any meetings. And what else can we add? I would make a motion to close the special meeting for December ninth, twenty twenty-four, noting that the B O C C will be meeting on the seventeenth at nine AM.
And I'll step down in second. Discussion, hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you.